Thank you, Kevin.
The redheads.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. I want to welcome everybody here tonight. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Prayer.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robert Hall, would you lead us in part, please?
Yes, this is Powerhead. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the night, for the privilege of being able to come here in this assembly. We thank you for all these young people who are with us tonight, and we celebrate their accomplishments, and we pray that you just continue to bless their lives, and may they live to bring honor and glory to your name. Be with our City Commission, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, board tonight as we conduct the city's business. We thank you for this great area in which we live and all your many blessings. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Robert. Item B, election of mayor. Do I hear nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reelect you. Mike Warner is mayor.
Thank you, Mark. Any other nominations? If there's no other nominations, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item C, election of vice mayor.
I'd like to nominate our existing Vice Mayor, Mark McCown.
Very good. Any other nominations? No other nominations, all in favor of Mark McCown, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Congratulations on that.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you. Item two, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, May 17, 2022.
So moved.
Any discussion under the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item three, petitions and communications in the public and items from the audience, we have several this evening, and I'll read them here. The first certificate of recognition is for the 2022 Gatlinburg Pittman High School State Champion Highlanders Soccer Team. And Coach Schrant, would you please come forward? Caleb, would you come forward too, please? And I'll tell you, the neat thing is, we had an opportunity to be at Murphysboro and see this game, and it was incredible, and you guys are just awesome. This is the 2022 Gatlinburg Pittman High School State Champion Highlanders Soccer Team. Whereas the Gatlinburg Pittman High School Highlanders won the regular season District 2A Soccer Championship by going undefeated against their league opponents. Whereas the Highlanders marched to the state tournament, suffered a bump in the road after losing to Alcoa in the District 2A Tournament Championship Game, forcing the Highlanders to win games of the Region 2A Tournament on the road. Whereas the Highlanders won a road thriller at Chucky Dope in penalty kicks, and then exact revenge on Alcoa in the Region 2A Tournament Championship Game with a 2-1 victory. The Gatlinburg Pittman scored another thrilling victory with a 1-0 win over Loudon in Class A sectional game to advance to the program's fourth straight state tournament appearance. And then the Highlanders won the state quarterfinals and state semifinals game over Memphis Business and Moro Hyde by wide range margins. Whereas Gatlinburg Pittman claimed its second state championship in school history with a 1-0 win over Madison Academic Magnet after the Highlanders won the penalty kicks by a 3-2 margin after a save by freshman Jeffrey, I don't remember these names, Valideras, which was incredible. Jeffrey, you here?
Yes, sir.
That was awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, and the game deciding kick, whereas Gatlinburg Pittman High School Highlanders 2022 Soccer Team completed its stellar 16-6-2 record by winning the TSSA Class A State Championship, and whereas the Highlanders were able to accomplish the state championship through the display of tremendous drive, determination, and perseverance, which was evident in the team's season of great successes. Whereas the senior midfielder Cody Kilberg, Cody, and senior forward Oscar Torcios, Oscar, you here?
Sir.
Okay. And junior midfielder Tristan Corral, and junior defender Oswaldo Godi, were named as all District 2A team for their championship efforts throughout the season. Whereas the Highlanders showed great play and sportsmanship on and off the pitch under the leadership of head coach Zach Schrant, and assistant coach Caleb Keener, whose leadership, love, and devotion to the team and the school made for an outstanding season of the Highlanders. Now therefore, I'm Mike Warner, Mayor of the City of Gatlinburg, Tennessee, on behalf of the City Commission, the City Manager, and local citizens do hereby express our congratulations, recognize and commend Gatlinburg Pittman 2022 Highlanders Soccer Team and their coaches for an outstanding championship season and display of hard work and team spirit to bring home the program's second state championship trophy. Let's hear it for them. Should we try to get a shot of the whole team up here?
Absolutely.
All right, come on, listen.
Whoever's best dressed can stand right here. We had one looking really slick earlier. Try to jump in.
Yeah, you can.
I'm the tallest, we stand back.
For none of our height.
Go train.
Some of you guys in the back.
One, two, three.
Congratulations. Our second is the 2022 Gatlinburg Pittman High School State Runner-Up Tennis Team, and the coaches, please come forward.
Actually, can I bring them with me since there are only five of them here?
Please.
Okay. Come on, guys, let's go.
Be a little less complicated.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna let them take everyone. I'm gonna kind of stand back.
Okay. These guys did a great job. Whereas the Gatlinburg Pittman High School Highlanders 2022 Tennis Team had a stellar season with an overall record of 10-1. Whereas the Highlanders went to a perfect 5-0 in the regular season District 2A, and then beat LNN STEM Academy for the District 2A Tournament Championship in May. Whereas the team was able to carry the momentum onto the Region 1A Tournament, where it was able to beat Unicoi County for the championship. Whereas the victory over Unicoi County advanced the Highlanders into a Class A sectional round matchup with Rockford High School, Rockwood High School. And their victory over the Tigers clinched the Highlanders' first berth to the TSSAA State Tournament for the first time since 2003. Whereas Gatlinburg Pittman was able to notch a victory over Chester County by a 4-2 margin with the Class A State Semifinals. Whereas in the state semifinals victory, Preston Johns and Justin McCarty and Skylar Floodquist all earned victories in singles play. And then the duo of Johns and McCarty picked up the win in doubles play. Whereas behind the strength of that play, the Highlanders were able to secure the state runner-up trophy for the Class A and the state for the 2022 season. And whereas Gatlinburg Pittman Senior Preston Johns also competed at the state tournament on the individual basis in the Belmont Academy, Belmont Abbey signing finished this year with a 10-0 mark qualifying for the first state semifinals. He was named the Knoxville News Sentinel Boys Tennis Player of the Year. That's awesome. Whereas the Highlanders showed many great play and sportsmanship on and off the court under the leadership of head coach Alexis Barrett and assistant coaches Chris Bowling, Sally Hilton, and G. Webb, whose leadership, love, and devotion for the team and the school made this school an outstanding season for the Highlanders. And whereas the Gatlinburg Pittman High School Highlanders 2022 Tennis Team displayed tremendous drive, determination, perseverance, was evident in the team's season of successes. Now therefore, I'm Mike Warner, Mayor of the City of Gatlinburg, Tennessee, and on behalf of the City Commission, City Manager, and local citizens, do hereby express our congratulations, recognize and commend the Gatlinburg Pittman 2022 Highlanders Tennis Team and their coaches for an outstanding championship season and display of hard work and team spirit to bring home a state runner-up trophy. Congratulations. Awesome. Our next one is the 2022 Gatlinburg Pittman Highlanders, Lady Highlanders Track Teams. Coach, would you come forward?
I'll bring the track team up here with me, too.
Okay.
Don't be hiding back there.
Whereas the Gatlinburg Pittman High School Highlanders and Lady Highlanders Track and Field Teams showed great determination and well-represented the school throughout the season of 2022. And whereas many numerous Highlanders and Lady Highlanders were able to compete throughout the 2022 season, and there were numerous sectional championships and sectional runner-up awards to qualify for the TWSTAA Spring Flame, State Track, and Field Meet held in Murphysboro, Tennessee. Whereas the Highlanders and Lady Highlanders team will be well-represented, their school and community at the state track and field meet. Whereas during their event at the TWSSAA State Track and Field Meet, the Highlanders and Lady Highlanders were able to claim three state championship gold medals. Whereas in addition to the state championship medals, the Gatlinburg Pittman Track and Field Teams also combined for seven different places on the podium. Whereas Lily Stennett and the Hamilton finished second and fourth in the state respectively in the 900-meter run. Kylie Yates finished sixth in the state in the 400-meter run. Tilly Trenton finished fifth in the state in the 3200-meter run. And Chadler Swerner finished sixth in the state in the pole vault. Whereas the Lady Highlanders 4x400 relay team, consisting of Emma Hamilton, Kendry Yates, Kylie Yates, and Lily Stennett finished fourth in the state. While the Highlanders 4x800 relay team comprised of Grady Branton, James Lanive, Adrian Nidlaka, Hernandez, and Sam Fulton finished fifth in the state. Whereas the Highlanders showed great play and sportsmanship on and off the track under the leadership of head coach Ralph Kidd and assistant coaches Jimmy Rowland Hagensons and Gary Stennett, whose leadership, love, and devotion to the team and the school made for an outstanding season for the Highlanders and Lady Highlanders. Now therefore, I'm Mike Warner, Mayor of the City of Gatlinburg, Tennessee, on behalf of the City Commission, City Manager, and local citizens do hereby express our congratulations, recognize and commend the Gatlinburg Pittman 2022 Highlanders Track and Field Team and their coaches for an outstanding championship season and display of hard work and team spirit to have an outstanding season, which resulted in many numerous honors at the state track and field meet. Congratulations. Coach. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
No, thank you.
Let's give another round of applause. Okay, I think some of you girls might come back up here. This is Gatlinburg Pittman High School's 4x800 Girls Relay 2022 State Championship Team. Where's the four?
She's in Murphysboro.
Okay. Okay, these girls are fast. Whereas the Gatlinburg Pittman High School Lady Highlanders 4x800 Relay Team is comprised of Tilly Trenton, Lily Stennett, Steffi Johnson, and Emma Hamilton. And whereas the relay team spent many long hours and devoted themselves to training for their events throughout the entire spring track and field season. Whereas the relay team collected numerous honors throughout the 2022 season, including winning the state county championship meet and finishing second in the GOV Open at William Blunt Last Chance Meet. And whereas the strong performance throughout the entire season qualified the relay team for another appearance at the TWSSAA State Track and Field Meet in order to defend its 2021 championship. Whereas at the state track and field meet, Trenton Stennett, Johnson, and Hamilton were able to put together a strong performance to finish the event in 10 minutes 26 seconds, which allowed them to cross the finish line 14 seconds ahead of the runner-up team from Alcoa, which is always good to beat Alcoa. Whereas the finishing team was also nearly one minute ahead of the pace set by the third-place team from Chattanooga School of the Arts and Sciences. Whereas the achievement and accomplishments of Tilly Trenton, Lily Stennett, Steffi Johnson, and Emma Hamilton highlighted the commitment, spirit, and pride of the Gatlinburg community. Now therefore, I'm Mike Warner, Mayor of the City of Gatlinburg, Tennessee, on behalf of the City Commission, City Manager, and local citizens, do hereby express our congratulations, recognize and commend the Gatlinburg Pittman High School 4x800 Girls Relay Team for an outstanding championship season and display of their hard work and team spirit to bring home their second consecutive state gold medal. Congratulations. Gatlinburg Pittman High School's Steffi Johnson, 1600-meter state champion. Whereas Gatlinburg Pittman High School's Steffi Johnson spent many long hours and showed strong determination, devoted herself to training for her track and field events throughout the entire spring season. And whereas Steffi collected numerous honors throughout the 2022 season, including winning several events throughout the state, the spring season, including victories at the Spear County Championship, GOV Open, Union County High School Event. Whereas in addition to her individual events, Steffi was also a member of the Lady Highlanders 4x800 Relay Team. Whereas the strong performances showcased by Steffi throughout the entire season allowed her to qualify for another appearance at the TWSSAA State Track and Field Meet in Murphysboro in order to defend her 2021 championship in the 1600-meter event. And whereas during the finals of the 1600-meter event at the state track and field meet, Steffi was able to finish in a time of 5 minutes 36 seconds and 53 1/100ths of a second to claim her second consecutive state championship gold medal in the event. Whereas her finishing time allowed her to cross the finish line 10 seconds ahead of Sequatche County's Julianne Givens, and 11 seconds ahead of third-place finisher Lily Shodown's of Chatham County. Whereas the achievements and accomplishments of Steffi Johnson highlighted the commitment, spirit, and pride of the Gatlinburg community. Now therefore, I'm Mike Warner, Mayor of the City of Gatlinburg. And your uncle. On behalf of the City Commission, City Manager, and local citizens, do hereby express our congratulations, recognize and commend the championship season and display of her hard work and team spirit to bring home a second state championship gold medal. Congratulations. And last but not least is Sam Fulton's. Sam's not here tonight. This is probably the most exciting race at the track meet. Whereas Gatlinburg Pittman High School's Sam Fulton spent many long hours and showed strong determination to devote himself to training for his track and field events throughout the entire season. Whereas Sam Fulton collected numerous honors throughout the 2022 season, including winning the Spear County Championship in the 800-meter and 1600-meter events, for winning the 800-meter event at the William Blunt Last Chance Event and the Union County High School Event. Whereas in addition to his individual events, Sam also was a member of the Highlanders 4x400 and 4x800 relay teams. Whereas the strong performances showcased by Sam throughout the entire season allowed him to qualify for another appearance at the TWSSAA State Track and Field Meet in Murphysboro. Whereas during the finals of the 800-meter event at the state track meet, Sam Fulton was able to finish in a time of 1 minute 56 seconds and 53 1/100ths of a second, which was the new Gatlinburg Pittman High School record, to claim the state championship. Whereas his time allowed him to cross the finish line 1/100th of a second ahead of Sequatche County's Carter Bradford in a thrilling finish. Whereas the accomplishments and accomplishments of Sam Fulton highlighted the commitment, spirit, and pride of Gatlinburg community. Now therefore, I'm Mike Warner, Mayor of the City of Gatlinburg, Tennessee, on behalf of the City Commission, City Manager, and local citizens, do hereby express our congratulations, recognize and commend the Gatlinburg Pittman High School senior Sam Fulton for an outstanding championship season and display of his hard work and team spirit to bring home the state championship gold medal. Let's hear it for Sam. I see Sam running all the time, that kicking run. Let's hear it again for Sam.
Why would they ever want to leave?
They're not understanding.
There's wastewater treatment?
If you want to go, it's bad tonight, it's real bad. There's a beer board meeting, that's always fun.
I'd just like to say, as Chris from Gatlinburg Pittman High School, what you all do as a city for our programs is incredible. The tennis facilities over at Minnet Park, the brand-new track facilities that we have over at the high school now as part of the city park, what we're doing to recondition to extend the soccer field, the new bleachers and stuff, and you guys play a vital, vital role in everything that we do, and that's what causes and allows these kids to accomplish what they accomplish. Thank you very much.
And if you all want to leave, you can leave.
Really proud of you all. Yep, you guys did awesome.
He shot up like a weed this year. He got tall.
Sabrina's still running. She still holds the...
I can't believe they didn't want us to... I want to walk out with them. I'm ready, too. Let's get out of here. Mayor, you get some water after that?
I got it. Hey, Jim. Okay, item four, reports of boards and committees. Item five, city managers' report.
Excuse me, yes, sir. Just a couple of items here. As we do at every meeting here, there will be at the podium, a couple of project status updates. One is associated with the convention center project, and the other is associated with several other projects that we want to keep you up to date with. And if you have any questions about that, of course, just reach out to any of us, and we'll try to give you answers. Excuse me. There are two other things I want to talk about related to upcoming events, and that would be the Fourth of July Midnight Parade, the River Wrap Regatta, and the 100th Army Band and Fireworks Finale. Greg asked me if I wanted any water before the meeting began, and I said no, and that was a big mistake.
You gotta have water.
Yeah. The Fourth of July Parade will kick off at 12:01 on Monday, July 4th, of course, the first parade in the nation. Later that day, the celebration continues with the River Wrap Regatta at 11:00 a.m. in that evening, a patriotic concert on the Ripley's Aquarium Plaza with the 100th Army Band from Fort Knox, Kentucky. That will be held at 9:00 p.m. And then the other upcoming events or happening in town is the resumption of the Toons and Tales, Smoky Mountain Toons and Tales, and that will return to the streets of Gatlinburg July 1 through 31. And so what we've got going on are the things that you all know about as it relates to musicians and storytellers and such as that. And again, the cast will perform nightly beginning at 6:00 p.m. for the month of July. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Cindy. Cody did some...
Our team just wanted, that's just like Jersey T guys, we'll sign it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
That's very nice, Cody, thank you.
Thanks.
We're gonna update our signs in the city also to express the past year and this year.
Did you get that parade and hang it?
Yeah. That's awesome. Thanks for the... No problem, guys, thank you.
I'll tell you, Cody played his heart out of that game.
I was a little tired then.
Well, we are really proud of you guys, I'm serious. You know, GP's in our hearts, you know that.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thank you for the jersey.
The game runs on the PEC Channel regularly.
That game does? Does it? Okay.
I stole it from...
I got you.
One thing to add here that...
Robert, just pardon me.
Robert, just pardon me. That Robert just reminded me of is Police Kids Camp. Registration opened yesterday for Robert.
Nine to 13, ages nine to 13.
And the dates are July 25 through 29. Thank you, Robert.
That's a great camp, too. Okay, thank you, Cindy. Item six, old business, A ordinance number 2587, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance being ordinance 830, and further being an ordinance to reclassify parcels 26 and 27 in Tax Map 127. Located at 312 Newman Road from R1 low-density residential district to R2 medium-density residential district, second reading and public hearing. Pass Planning Commission 42122, first reading 51722. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Now open the public hearing. Any comments? With none, I'll close the public hearing and open for discussion. With no discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no. Item B, ordinance number 2588, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance being ordinance 830, and further being an ordinance to reclassify parcel 9 in Tax Map 126N. Group G located at 337 Reagan Drive from R2 medium-density residential district to C1 tourist commercial district, second reading and public hearing. Pass Planning Commission 42122, first reading 51722. Do I hear a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion in a second. I'll open the public hearing. Any comments? With no comment, I'll open for discussion. With no discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no. Item C, ordinance number 2589, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance being ordinance 830, and further being an ordinance to reclassify parcel 6 in Tax Map 1260. Group A located on Sunset Drive from R2 medium-density residential district to C2 general business district, second reading and public hearing. Pass Planning Commission 42122, and first reading 51722. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. And I'll open the public hearing. Any comments? No comments, I'll close the public hearing and open for discussion. No discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no. Item D, ordinance number 2590, appropriating an amount sufficient to cover the necessary expenses of the various departments, offices, and boards of the city pending the final passage of the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year 22 through 2023. This is the second reading, pass first reading 51722. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no. Item seven, new business. Discussion and consideration of approving the usage of the aquarium parking garage by the Friends of Tennessee's Babies with Special Needs on August 20, 2022. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. And this is.
Yeah, no, it's a great event. Mr. Mayor, it really is. Every year they do it. It's always proven successful, and we're always grateful to the commission to give us the parking garage for that time. These kids got pretty rough, some of them, so it's nice to see.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? With none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no. Item B, discussion and consideration of approving a professional services agreement with CDM Smith related to the site development and drainage improvements for the mass transit facility to be located on Newman Road. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in a second. Cindy, can we have a little discussion on this, please?
Yes, sir. And I would like to recognize a good friend that I haven't seen in a while and colleague, Bob Bowers, is here representing CDM Smith this evening. He's retired a few times and keeps coming back, right, Bob? And we appreciate it, and it's good to see you. Jeff Myers, that you all are more familiar with, could not be here this evening. Larry, if you would come forward and talk some. We touched on this project yesterday during the CIP presentation. The site is on Newman Road down next to the service center. The city did receive a TDOC grant, and it actually was approved back in August of this year. And the numbers, Larry, you have there handy or not do?
On the TDOC grant, it's $536,248.
And then the local share?
And that's plus our local share, 25%. So that's the amount of the grant award.
That's the amount of the project?
That is.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Larry.
And so what this is about is for an engineering agreement in the amount of $58,000?
Total, it's $148,200.
Oh, that's the two numbers added.
Yeah, that's the two numbers added, right. The first part is $82,000, which is actually for the engineering, which includes all the phases, the need for the civil design, the stormwater, geotechnical, preparing bid documents, and coordinating TDOC coordination, such as utility and right-of-way certifications. And then the second part of it is for the construction engineering inspection in the amount of $66,200, which is basically resident inspection and keeping track of all the quantities and verifying this, that, and the other for the TDOC grant. So that takes a lot of time, consumption, and a lot of paperwork, so that's the reason it costs so much. So, and the total amount is $148,200 for the full service. And this will get us to subgrade site development, ready for building construction when we get to that point.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Larry. With none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no. Item C, discussion and consideration of approving, other than low bid, to citywide facility solutions for the city hall complex and the golf course buildings, janitorial services. Do I hear a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion in a second. Can we have a little discussion on this, too, please?
Yes, and actually, Robert Holt has been involved in this process, and I will ask you, Robert, to review this and probably go ahead and speak to the next item. It's same company, but for the community center building.
Yeah, we had both of these companies that are listed on the memo come and do a kind of site visit and tour city hall and the golf course, and just as I noted in the memo, just reviewing their staffing and kind of what their reference list were, was both Matt Poff, golf course manager, and Melvin Lawrence here who toured with them feel that Citywide Solutions is the company we should choose. They're equipped to handle our needs. The other company, we just didn't have a, just didn't feel like they were a good fit for the golf course and city hall, based on their capabilities and staffing.
And if you want to go ahead and talk.
And the same thing, there's four companies on the community center, and I did discuss this with Lawrence Evans, Parks and Recreation Manager as well. The same company that was low bid at city hall and the golf course was also low bid at the community center, but just did not feel they were at all capable to deal with all that needed to happen to keep the community center clean. And Citywide's already, we already have a history with them. They've been cleaning the public restrooms now for a year. They do the morning cleaning downtown, and so we already have a comfort level with them and feel like they'd be the best fit for both of these projects.
Thank you, Robert. Any other discussion or questions? With none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, say no. Item D, discussion and consideration of approving, other than low bid, to citywide facility solutions for the community center building janitorial services. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. We heard Robert's explanation for choosing them. Any other discussion or questions? With none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no. Item E, resolution 994, resolution regarding the distribution of additional local option sales and use tax as previously adopted by the residents of Spear County, and further being a resolution to amend and supersede resolution number 836 as previously adopted by the city. Do I hear a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion in a second. Cindy, can we have a little discussion on this, please?
Yes, sir. In your agenda package is the request from the interim superintendent, Stephanie Husky. The, this tax was approved in.
2009.
And the request, and with the, the city at that time passed a resolution to send all of that quarter cent to the school system that otherwise would be a 50-50, 50% city, 50 school system. And that is, therefore, it is set to expire not this June 30, but next year, June 30, 2023. And so the request and what we have therefore put on the agenda for your consideration is an additional 15-year period that would therefore go to June 30, 2038. Ron, do you need to add anything to that, sir?
That's fully set out, I think, in the resolution.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Any further comments or discussion? With none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no. Item F, discussion and consideration of approving a lease agreement with the Spear County School Board of Education for property located adjacent to the Gatlinburg Pittman High School football field. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
And we have a little discussion on this, please?
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask Greg if he would give you some highlights of this. This is, we also, I think, touched on this yesterday, didn't we, in the CIP discussion? So Greg, if you would take it away there.
Now, this is a request from the Spear County Board of Education to lease additional property that's located adjacent to the Gatlinburg Pittman High School football field. It's on where the old tennis court side used to be, and it's for purposes, they're building a new field house and weight room. This is a 25-year lease with an option for 25 more. And the area there, you can see in your packet, it's approximately 210 feet by 80 feet.
Thank you, Greg.
Well, we better approve it. They're building it. It's going up whether we want it or not. So there you go.
Any other discussion? With none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no. Item G, discussion.
No, it's right.
Discussion and consideration of approving appointments to the Anna Porter Public Library Board. Do I hear a nomination?
I think it's just, it's accepting, isn't it?
We're accepting it.
It's basically the slate, I mean, the board.
We just.
People are listed, yeah. It's, and this only started, honestly, what, Robert, two or three years ago?
Two years ago.
And the state comptroller said because basically all of the funding comes from the city, that the city, that the legislative body needed to at least rubber stamp the board. So it's not really a nominating or any of those kind of things process.
So would you like to approve the appointments they've made?
I would, yeah, I would nominate. We accept the slate.
Very good. Second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no. Item H, discussion and consideration of making appointments to the planning commission.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Mayor Chad Reagan to the planning commission.
For the commission appointee?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other nominations? With none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no. This item I, discussion and consideration of making an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Sir, you have a mayoral appointment that you need to, we need to officially get in the record.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jackie Leatherwood.
Okay. And I don't know if that requires a vote by the board or not.
That's the mayor's destiny.
You think so?
Well, if it's the mayor's appointment.
That's not going to be a problem. Why don't y'all just vote?
Okay.
Okay.
Which board was it? Jackie Leatherwood.
This is the mayoral appointment to the planning.
Building and planning. Okay, that's all I was asking.
Planning commission.
Can we have a motion in a second? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no. Item I, discussion and consideration, making appointment to Board of Zoning Appeals.
I have a nomination of Ms. Amanda Caton, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other nominations? With none, all in favor of Ms. Caton, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Item J, discussion and consideration of declaring two city trolleys as surplus. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
And if we could, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce to you all and the public our new mass transit manager, this fine gentleman right here, Nick White.
Hey, welcome aboard.
Nick has been with us now a month, maybe?
Almost.
Almost, and has so far so very good.
Are the trolleys running on time?
We're trying our best.
They're all going to the aquarium, right? Just verifying that. Other than that, you're doing good. That's good.
They look pretty full today.
They did look full.
And so Nick is doing a good job for us so far and very into it, riding the trolleys, riding the trolleys on the Memorial Day holiday weekend. So a good, new, fresh set of eyes there, and we wanted to have the opportunity to introduce him tonight. And I think I failed at the last city commission meeting, or we did, to officially introduce our new building and planning director. And I did that because he's one of us, and we all know him. So Jeff, Owen B., for those of you who don't know him.
Awesome.
Mrs. Bowers may be the only one in the room that doesn't know him. And so, but again, just glad to have, excited to have new folks in critical positions in the city, so we're glad for that. And the declaring of the two city trolleys actually comes as a result, if you remember, there was some stuff declared that way surplus last meeting. I said, well, how come we didn't do that then? And that's because Nick wasn't with us yet, and he, this is a result of his being very hands-on and realizing a couple of trolleys that needed to be declared surplus. So a lot said, just basically to say that's what that.
Got you. Okay. Any further discussion? With none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no.
Did they make a motion, is that?
Yes.
To approve it, didn't they? Okay, good. I don't know who it was, but.
Mark and Chad.
Mark and Chad.
Item K, ordinance number 2591, amending the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022. This is the first reading. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on this?
Well, it's. Well, it's, it's a lot of money.
What is that?
But this is addition to the previous budget?
We're, this is, this is a year-end, what's commonly referred to as the year-end transfer ordinance. And I would submit to you that about every year, there's a need for a year-end transfer ordinance as it relates to various and sundry. Most of these relate to business items that you approve during the course of the fiscal year that require an additional appropriation. Robert, do you want to?
Now, I will say the last year's was larger than this one, believe it or not.
Okay. Well, what caught my eye mainly was the $5.5 million from General Fund.
Yeah, and that is something, you know, the reason we have to do that is we have to actually codify what you approved to move. We approved to move some money from General Fund to water and sewer, to the wastewater treatment plant.
This is, and let me, let me state it this way, because this is what I think they're more familiar with. Excess gross receipts revenues specifically, remember, that was something that we came to you with months, months ago, as it, as it related to the need to move, is it four and a half?
Yes, ma'am.
So four and a half of that five and a half is the move of excess gross receipts dollars to the wastewater treatment plant improvement project.
I remember that.
Yeah.
I've slept since then, so.
A little bit. Haven't very much, but I got that part. But that is indeed, Vice Mayor, where the, where the bulk of that is.
Okay.
And then where you see this additional appropriating, if you go down, well, down to like three more statements, and it gets into the wastewater fund, all of that is associated with the same project.
It is, it is. And then we're just, then we're just appropriating the additional bar, the bond proceeds. We budgeted to borrow 16.8, wind up borrowing 20, and so we just have to actually put that in. We've got the catch, we just actually have to put it in the budget, in the accounts.
All right. Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Cindy. Okay, we have a motion in a second with no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Unscheduled items, number eight. We'll start with Commissioner DeSere.
All right, just...It was great to see all the kids come out tonight and get their awards. They all did great.
I noticed that when, you know, I was at the state calculus finals, I got nothing from city commission 30 years ago, but I'll let it go.
We'll take care of that. We'll take care of that.
Just throwing it out there. Nobody cares about the math kids. Anyway, it was great to see them out, so I was very happy with them. Proud of GPOs, you know that. Thank you.
We're still mayor back then. He can write...
Commissioner Smith.
Keeping with the Gatlinburg-Pitman theme, I think we ought to be grateful Coach Hammond's...
Absolutely.
Got through his surgery and doing well. And of course, they wanted to get him out of there as quick as they could because he had to wait to get the garden, so... He was supposed to stay about two weeks, and he ended up staying two days, I think, or three. So anyway, thank goodness he's in good shape, and blessings answered there, so...
Awesome. Thank you, Kirby. Commissioner Reagan.
I'd like to reiterate what they just said. It's all good. And to the newcomers, Nick and Jeff, welcome aboard. And Jeff, I've already heard great things about how you're running the department, and if I have some feedback, I just want to say thank you already. It's been good words. Also, I'd like to thank our auctioneer here that we raised $15,650 on this surplus vehicles that we had. That was actually really good, so whatever you did down there as the auctioneer, you did a good job to raise that much money on those vehicles you had down there.
You can't buy a new car. You better buy those, I guess.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor McCown.
Last meeting, I failed to do something I wanted to do at this meeting. And I hope the word gets back to David Ball of how much we appreciate his 30 years of work in the Planning Commission. Jeff, O and B, congratulations and welcome to the planning department. I know you have experience in that area, and I've also heard some good things, so... And Nick White, congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And I'll echo everything that was said, and I want to thank my fellow commissioners for electing me mayor again.
Thank you for taking it.
Thank you, and just good things in the future for Gatlinburg. With that, ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
We are adjourned, and we do have a beer board.
Yes, sir, we do. So I will call the beer board meeting to order. The second item on the agenda is approval of amendments for April 26, 2022, as a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that they are approved. The only item is...Or the only item under new business is discussion and consideration of approving an on-off premise beer permit for Catherine A. Toon, DBA Coffee Cafe and Grocery, 170 Glades Road, number 33. The approval would need to be contingent upon receipt of the sales tax certificate. Otherwise, everything appears to be in order.